First and check, Eric Landry Goldberg Hernandez, old Miss Cowsky, the check up idea really Thomas, orange blacks Walters for all 10 members president and core Mr. President.
Council will please come to order. This is a meeting of the city council for the city of Los Angeles on the 12th day of January of the year 2000. There are 15 council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesday, Wednesdays and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on channel 35. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Our Miss Goldberg moves, Mr. Hernandez second. If there's no objections unanimous vote. The next item.
Commendatory resolutions.
There's no objections unanimous vote. Next item.
Item number one on the regular agenda, request this matter be continued till February 16th.
There's no objections, that will be the order. Next item.
Item number 18, a request of this matter be continued to January 26th.
If there's no objections unanimous vote.
On the regular agenda.
Before I, before you, Ms. Goldberg, you have a.
Yes, I'd like to move that we receive and file item number 25.
Is there any objections to receiving item 25?
That's the prop five on the airport. The folks all met the last couple of days and they've ironed out the problems and.
Okay, if there's no objections, that will be.
It's a satisfactory conclusion to the problem.
That will be received and filed.
You're most welcome. Thank you very much.
Items number two through nine on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number nine requires a motion inasmuch as the report contains recommendations without recommendations of the committees.
Could we have some quiet over here, please? Item two and three are ordinances. We'll hold those on a desk because we do not have 12 yet. We have four, five, six, seven, eight. Any specials by council members? Five, five and nine. Any others? If not, prepare the roll on four, six, seven and eight. Tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items number 10 through 17 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, we have, we have cards on 12. And 12. Anybody want to be heard in any of the other items? No, no, the public. Anybody want to be heard? If not, the public hearings close on all those except item 12. You want to call 17 special? Mrs. Chick calls 17 special. Any other specials? 10 through 17 with the exception of 12 and. Yes, yes, 12 and 17. Okay, the public hearings close on all those. We have ordinances. We'll hold those ordinances, but we have 10, 11, 16. Prepare the roll on those. What, Mr. Holden?
I'm present.
Huh?
The roster should show him.
Yeah, about time. Okay, okay, then, then we'll include the ordinances. So we have 10 through 16 with the exception of 12 and we also have two and three. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number 23 on the continuation agenda. 10 votes required on this matter.
Item 23. Okay, is there any discussion on 23? Mrs. Walters calls it special. Okay, 23 and 24, Mrs. Walters calls special. Next item.
Item number five called special by council member Walters.
Mrs. Walters, you called five special?
Yes, Mr. President, and I called it just to get some information. I saw a news item a few days ago about some cattle who were grazing on that land. It appeared to be the same land and that somebody stole some of the cattle. But my question is, does the operator have a permit to have cattle on that public property, Hanson Dam?
Mr. Adia?
My district, yes, Ms. Walters, the Hanson Dam recreational area is actually a very, very large area in.
I understand, I'm familiar with it.
Hold on, I want to answer your question. Where the lakes are is in one end of that entire area. The city does have a tenant, the San Fernando Valley Equestrian Center. And the cattle and the horses that are kept on that facility are permitted as part of that agreement.
I know the horses are permitted. I'm not aware that the cattle are. And I would ask for a report from Recreation and Parks back to the council on whether the cattle are permitted.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
To council or to committee?
To both. We do it both, both ways. Okay. But I thought it may get to council faster than if it goes to committee. We don't meet again until the 24th.
Okay, so are we ready to vote and there will be a report back to the committee? Open the roll, close the roll. Maybe you better mark that I'm here, by the way.
12 eyes.
There are probably 13 eyes because I'm listed as not here. All right, well, you'll figure that out. Let's go to the next item. The next, the next item is what? The chair recognizes council president Ferraro for a presentation.
Ms. Gordon? Madam President, members of the council, how are you? I know this is unusual to make a presentation on Wednesday. It's also even more unusual to make a presentation that was approved February 5th, 1999. But we've had trouble getting this wonderful lady to the council chamber. And let me just point out that Sandra Gordon served as a member of the Los Angeles Convention, Exhibit Center Authority Commission for 25 years, was president for 11 years. Whereas she was instrumental in the development of North Hall project, a major expansion project, supplemental projects, and the Kent, how do you pronounce that?
The Kinta Hall.
Kinta Hall project. And whereas Ms. Gordon served as a keen team member of the expansion project during the initial startup for the planning and of the program and architectural work. Whereas her long tenure as a commissioner was important to the success of the capital projects as she had extensive knowledge and experience to contribute. And whereas Sandra D. Gordon was a founding president and continues to be a significant leader in the development of the operation of the Independence Hall, Independence Center, I should say, a residential program for young adults with learning disabilities. Due to her dedicated efforts, many youths have matured and achieved independence through this unique program. Now therefore, be resolved by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council commends Sandra D. Gordon for her unselfish dedication and hard work as a commissioner with the Los Angeles Convention and Exhibit Center Authority and wishes her the best in her future endeavors. Madam President, members of the council, I'd like to present this to Sandra D. Gordon for her outstanding contribution to the city of Los Angeles and the many endeavors.
Thank you, Senator. Just want to thank you all for this privilege of receiving this resolution. And it certainly has been an honor for me to serve the city under two administrations for the last 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
All right, now, let's go to the next item.
Items number two and three are ordinances.
All right, items number two and three, we don't have any cards on the ordinances. Do we have any members of the council wishing to speak on items two or three? Seeing none, open the roll on items two and three. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Isn't that efficient? Let's go to the next item.
Item number nine on the regular agenda called special by council member Chick.
Okay, Mrs. Chick, would you push the button? Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Rather than use my time at this point, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask our CAO, Mr. Fujioka, to briefly explain the amending motion that's before us for the committee report and then I'll make my comments.
Okay. Mr. Fujioka.
Good morning. What we have before you is a, is a report from our, from our office, the Personnel and Government Efficiency Committee, that references reports prepared by the Personnel Department and then a Joint Labor Management Committee on Employee Safety and Workers' Compensation. What we have, although we generally agree with the recommendations in both report, what we're recommending is a, is a phasing or incremental approach to this very, very serious topic. What we're asking for is to allow us to work with both entities, the Personnel Department and the Joint Labor Management Committee, to basically to, to develop a comprehensive risk management and loss prevention and safety program for the city of L.A. We're asking for funding for two positions and the ability to work with, to bring in two consultants to work with the Joint Labor Management Committee and then our, our office in the Personnel Department to achieve the goals and objectives related to the departments, to creating a safety program for the city. Initially, we asked for money to fund this request. We asked for $50,000 to fund the consultants. Since that request, we've looked at our own internal resources and made a decision to absorb this cost within our existing budget. So we no longer need that money. In addition, in the original motion, there's a request for us to look at IOD payments for sworn staff. I need to bring to your attention that we'll be removing, we're going to ask that you not go forward with that recommendation because we're in the process of starting negotiations for both of our major sworn contracts for fire and police.
Let me interrupt you for one second. If you really want to bring this to people's attention, I need to make them pay attention. If you just want to get the vote through and you think we're okay, then we'll just go ahead and you can bring it to the public's attention as you're doing. Members of the council, I know, hello out there, I know that you are all going to ask questions about this that Mr. Fujioka has already answered. So can I get a little attempt? This is not so easy. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, you're probably going to ask him questions he's already answered. So while we have him up here, can we just ask you to listen to this for a second? Try again.
Thank you very much. The central focus being is that we have three major entities in the city working together to develop a comprehensive loss prevention and safety program. I did mention, I was in the process of mentioning.
Mention the part about how you no longer need the funding.
That our original request was for $50,000 to fund a consultant to come in to help us in this endeavor. We have identified funds within our existing budget in the CEO to fund the consultant services. So I ask that that item not be part of today's motion. In addition, as part of the regular motion, the original motion is a proposal to look at IOD paid for sworn employees. We also ask that you remove that recommendation because we're in the process of starting negotiations for those two contracts. And that item would be best addressed during the formal salary negotiations for our fire and police contracts. We have, you have two very comprehensive reports from the Personnel Department and the Joint Labor Management Committee on Safety. I'd want that you, I would like that you take our report today as an interim report. It's our intent to come back to. It's our intent to come back to this council, first with Personnel and the Government Efficiency Committee. We'll be, the, we'll be coming back with a separate report on our progress made in developing a comprehensive safety program and loss prevention program for the city. Are there any questions?
John?
Mrs. Chick?
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Fujioka. Colleagues, I appreciate our, Madam Chair Galanter's attempts to get your attention, and hope I will have it for a couple of minutes. What's before us today, as amended, is a very, very important and long overdue step towards addressing one of the most expensive problems facing this city, and that is the escalating year-by-year costs of our workers' compensation program. Within two years, 1995 and 1997, the city hired and paid two separate consultants to come in and look at our workers' comp system. The city's department, Personnel Department, came up with an eight-point plan of recommendations. We formed a Joint Labor Management Committee with Personnel that came up with recommendations before you. In 1995, there was a consultant report. In 1997, there was a consult, another consultant report. We are not at a loss for good ideas, good pragmatic, best practices from the private sector ideas on how to make our workplace safer, on how to prevent accidents, on how to prevent fraud, and how to take something that has now escalated over $120 million a year of taxpayer dollars, make, make sure our workers are protected and covered properly when injured on the job, but find ways to save some of those dollars and divert them to the delivery of services that the constituents we serve need and deserve. So I look forward to unanimous report. I look forward to working with the CAO's office and the Personnel Department and moving towards having one single point of authority and responsibility over what's become a very expensive and complicated program. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Goldberg?
First of all, let me just say that I think, even though it's been a long time in coming, we're beginning to see some daylight in this area, and I'm very happy about that. It's something that we've been pursuing in a variety of committees for a long time. But I would like to send one piece of this back to committee only because the appropriate union did not have a chance to testify, and I told them I'd give them a chance to testify, and then we'll bring it right back, which is item seven, to instruct CAO to negotiate IOD pay for sworn city employees at take-home levels, as is already the case with civilian city employees. And the UFLAC said they did not, were not notified that we had this in committee, and I agreed with them that if that was the case, we'd at least hear that piece. So, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, I'd like to ask that we remove item seven from this report. We will bring it right back, but we will send this to, that just item seven to committee. You want it joined, or you want me to just to do, okay, just, just to Personnel Committee? And I assure the council, we'll get the item back one way or the other right away, but I did make that commitment, because they said they did not know about it to come to testify.
On that particular note, I, I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Bozell and mentioned the proposal to take this to the table during the formal negotiations process, and he was in absolute concurrence.
Called me yesterday.
I talked to him in council yesterday, and then about, again, probably about noon time.
Is Mr. Bozell here? Yeah.
Either way.
All right. Could you hold this on the desk for a minute? Because I, I made that commitment, if it's not the case, and I don't want to hold it down.
Before Ms. Goldberg steps away.
Ms. Goldberg?
I just want to make sure I understand what's before us, because Ms. Galanter was trying to get our attention so we wouldn't have the same questions. And then I heard the CAO give a report. In the CAO's report, he made two recommendations that he wanted us to consider. One of those recommendations was that he did not feel that at this time we needed to appropriate $50,000, because he had it, or they had it in line item, and that they didn't need that money for, for this purpose. And I have an amending motion that was instructing us to set aside $50,000. Is that a separate $50,000, or is that the same $50,000?
No, it's to do, he's saying to not extend.
Okay, so, so we're not going to be doing that. And the second thing he reported was that he wanted item seven to be removed at this time, because he felt that was better dealt with during negotiations. So that's basically, so supporting this motion before us, 9A does what you want.
Absolutely.
I, I just checked, he didn't get back to me. He had a conversation after he talked to me. I'll find, I withdraw my motion to pull out number seven. I go forward as amended with 9A.
So at this time, I, I second initially, and I also move the amending motion before us, so that we can carry on.
Okay, any further discussion on this? If not, you heard the motion, so prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 12.
Item number 12, Mr. Burnson. We do have a lot of cards. Did you have a public hearing yesterday?
Yes, Mr. President, we had a public hearing approximately an hour yesterday in, in front of the joint committees. I would, however, move five minutes on each side for, say, two speakers, so that we can do that. Five minutes on each side, okay.
I'm not, I'm not going to pick the two speakers, so if those, those in opposition would please speak first, and who, who wants to be heard?
It's a little unclear, opposition, it says it's a neutral thing in the agenda. Opposition to the lawsuit.
Opposition to the lawsuit. Do you want?
No, see, they're in favor, opposition to the lawsuit would be the developer.
No, no, we want the people in opposition to the development.
Okay, that's actually not opposing, they're just, they're just favoring a lawsuit, not opposing the development.
Yeah.
The lawsuit?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, those in favor of the lawsuit, who wants to be heard? Give your name, please. Yes. Pull that microphone up.
Good morning, my name is Shigi Verone. I'm a Los Angeles resident, and I was here yesterday, and I listened to the Department of Transportation admit that they did not have time to look at the mitigations that Mr. Siffen has placed upon the table in an effort to try to circumvent a lawsuit by Los Angeles. I would ask that all of you please, before you make any kinds of decision, I hope that you will take into consideration the recommendation by your fire chief, by your police chief, and look at what these mitigations actually will do or will not do for the people of Los Angeles. I also have another very serious concern that was not brought up yesterday to any great extent. There's a street called Altaloma, and Altaloma is a, one block street that is east of, I'm sorry, west of La Cienega. It is one of only three streets that allow access to the hills. If the street is blockaded, as they are now recommending, and it is made a cul-de-sac, it will remove one-third of the access to the hills. I read an article in the paper this morning about David and Goliath, indicating that Los Angeles was Goliath. In this case, that is simply not true. Goliath is West Hollywood, backed by Leon Black and the Milken money from Milken's junk bonds, which have bought and paid for the support that they have received in West Hollywood. We are here as citizens of Los Angeles, taxpayers, and people who live here and care about our community. I'm asking that you please stand with Mike Fuer, at least considering what this mitigation will mean to the citizens of Los Angeles, and please listen to your fire and police department, and remain Altaloma an access street for those of us who live in the hills and need access to places like Cedars, which is very important for all of our life and well-being. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Helene Gale, or, if you want, step up, I, I don't, I want those who are really involved as to-
Hello, my name is Hank McCann, I'm a resident of Los Angeles. I was here yesterday, and as usual, the people that are proposing this project speak with forked tongues and do not give you truthful answers. I was always told there's no degree to honesty, either you are or you're not. They are not. Here is the truth. They have estimated 13,000 more cars a day by this project. The truth is 16,500 more cars a day. The truth is, there is only one street for over one mile that we can get to our homes. Every citizen is entitled to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We cannot live our lives because we can't get to our homes. We can't get away from our homes. We can't get to medical treatment. We can't get emergency vehicles there. One street for over one mile, and you have over 40 streets in Los Angeles trying to get down past the one access, which is La Cienega. And what is La Cienega? La Cienega is the ground zero for this project. They want to put a 10-story building there. They have promised people, these people, that they will have a cul-de-sac. They don't have the authority to give these people a cul-de-sac. The state of California owns the streets. West Hollywood doesn't own the streets, and yet they're there because they think they've been paid off. This group has been given $140,000 for a new gym. Another group has been given $175,000 for a new roof. This is not about gyms or roofs, this is about lives, our lives. We have a right to them. We have a right to get to our homes. How dare any of you wonder what would happen if 3,500 cars went by your house every day? Just imagine 16,500 cars additional a day. That doesn't include the fact that the studies, that they haven't even done a traffic study for this project. The only traffic study that they have done is based upon the Sunset specific plan, which was published in 1994. That was January of 1994, but the data was collected in 1993. The traffic report is seven years out of date. Seven years out of date. It does not comply with SAQ requirements. You've got to help us out. I heard this lady over here say, "You've got to protect your citizens." We are your citizens. You have to protect us. Thank you.
Okay, okay, there, the five minutes is up now. Those who signed up, we'll make those part of the file. Then, now, those in, against the lawsuit, Jeffrey Prang?
Good morning, good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jeffrey Prang, and I'm the mayor pro tem of the city of West Hollywood. It's great to be back. As you all recall, I worked here for four years for Councilmember Ruth Galanter, four years prior to my election. I learned a lot from Councilmember Galanter and a great deal from all of you.
Just tell us about the lawsuit.
One of the things that I learned during my, my tenure here is, is that as neighboring cities, we work best when we work together. This was clearly demonstrated how we work together with my friend Michael Fuer on the gun, on gun legislation, which has now been enacted in state law. The Sunset Millennium Project has been approved by our city council after exhaustive, and frankly, unprecedented, public debate. It's consistent, and indeed, 40% smaller than the specific plan adopted by our council permits, a plan that was developed over four years of unprecedented public participation, including participation, might I add, in comment and review by the city of Los Angeles and relevant departments. This project has the support of our community, it's consistent with our general plan, includes significant mitigations to traffic and other issues. Our city has confidence in the process, as well as the project, just as you have confidence in the projects that, that impact our borders, such as the Trizakhan and farmers' market development. We need to work together and trust that we, as elected officials, will make decisions for our communities while respecting the needs and impact of our, of our neighbors in, in Los Angeles. Going forward, I hope that we could create a mechanism which will permit our two cities to work together on development projects which impact our, each other's borders. I thank the committee for its recommendation against the, the lawsuit, and I encourage, encourage the council to sustain the committee recommendation.
Thank you. Cindy Starett?
West Hollywood Councilman Steve Martin is here, I think, had a brief comment.
Morning, councilmembers, we were here yesterday. We just want to remind you that we have, our city attorney and the city attorney for the city of Los Angeles has entered into a letter of agreement for inner-city cooperation, which we believe addresses all of the issues, which we do treat as very seriously. I will tell you, having personally sat through five hours of public testimony on this issue, watched all the planning commission tapes, and met three times with the residents on Altaloma, as well as met with, with Councilmember Fuer, I really believe that we have worked incredibly hard to make sure that the mitigations, traffic mitigations, work for all communities. We have no vested interest in making sure, in hurting access to the L.A. residents. A matter of fact, the mitigations serve both communities, because it is important to. And it is very important that you realize, though, that the cul-de-sacking of Altaloma is actually key to this project. Altaloma is a residential street, and if we allowed this project to be built without cul-de-sacking it, literally thousands of cars would come down and destroy the nature of this street. It would come down on Holloway, which would create other traffic problems, and it is really an important part of this project to make sure that, that, that residential nature is both preserved and the traffic be over to the areas, the collector's streets where they belong. Thank you.
I'm Cindy Starett from Latham and Watkins, and I represent the Sunset Millennium Project. We've submitted materials to you and responded, I think extensively, to both the specific plan comments and the traffic comments. Most importantly, after the committee meeting yesterday, we met for four hours with the city attorney with the Department of Transportation. The city of West Hollywood has proposed a signed settlement agreement to you. We have also proposed a settlement agreement to you. This addresses all the issues that DOT asked for in terms of cooperative measures. There's a graphic here to my right that shows that we are putting in an automated signalization system in West Hollywood. Trizakhan is putting in a system in Hollywood, and the blue area in the middle shows that with this settlement agreement, we are able to truly treat the Sunset Corridor as an integrated regional improvement. We're able to improve the signals under the lead of LA DOT. In addition, we're able to put emergency vehicle preemption in for the fire department, so that the L.A. Fire Station, which is in the city of Los Angeles, has a clear line all along Sunset Boulevard to access the hills above West Hollywood. In addition, the program includes cooperation on a number of other issues. It includes funding by the developer of transportation improvements valued at $480,000 for the city of Los Angeles. This is in addition to $7 million of improvements that are being done by the project as a whole, which will benefit everyone, including a dramatic widening at La Cienega and Sunset, which will widen it to six lanes. There are a number of details that we could get into, but in the interest of time, we'd just like to say that the project complies with the specific plan, we'll defend any case, but we think it's better for everyone to enter into a cooperative agreement that recognizes that Hollywood, West Hollywood, the city of Los Angeles, and the region as a whole benefit by working together to improve traffic for everyone. I believe there are a number of other speakers here, I know the unions are here. Just like to ask everyone to stand that's here in support of the Sunset Millennium Project, and we ask the council to consider this agreement very carefully that was recommended to you by the planning committee, by the transportation committee, and worked out with DOT and with the city attorney's office. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. We have, all those who made cards, we'll make it part of the file. Mr. Fuer, you want to be first?
Yeah, I, I am happy to be heard in open session, and in fact, delighted to have this be an open session conversation, but before I start, because what I'm going to say implicates legal issues, can we do it in open, Keith? Because I would like to. I'd like everybody here to hear what's really going on, so.
Well, we could, if we want to talk about the-
I want to talk about legal issues and proposals for how to resolve this that implicate the law, and our stance litigation-wise, what our staff is saying, a lot of things that I think were unnecessarily discussed in closed session yesterday, but I want to be, I want to get the answers.
What I would suggest is perhaps we could begin the discussion in, in open session, and if there's something that might lead us to potential liability on the part of the city, we may need to adjourn to closed session on certain questions.
Okay, all right, fine.
You want to be heard now?
Well, I'd like to be heard now. I don't know if Hal or Rudy want to state what the committee is recommending, and maybe I could be heard after they're done. How about that?
Well, all right, Mr. Burnson, I'm going to call you first.
Yes, I'm going to keep an eye on the city attorney, because I, there were some discussions that took place in executive session that I am concerned about, so the city attorney ought to maybe take a seat up here and advise me if I'm going beyond the boundaries. Essentially, what the issue was before us was whether to initiate a lawsuit against the city of West Hollywood, challenging the adequacy of their environmental report. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The action of the committee was to basically approve a stipulated agreement between the developers and the city of West Hollywood and the city of Los Angeles relative to certain other improvements. other improvements. And those improvements were the completion of an ADSAQ system between the portion of Los Angeles, where our ADSAQ system takes place, and up to the portion that was going to be developed into an ADSAQ system by the city of West Hollywood, by the developer. Also, to develop a lifeline for emergency vehicles with signal preemption. Is that correct?
Yes.
Am I missing anything now besides that?
I don't believe so.
I believe that covers it. And based upon that recommendation, the city, the committee unanimously, both committees unanimously agreed, three to nothing, to go along and approve and not file the lawsuit, provided that those stipulations were taken care of.
Correct.
And that essentially, did I say anything that needed to be discussed in executive session?
No.
And that was the action of the committee. I will yield now to, let me just add a couple footnotes, because I think that part of the consideration was, we felt that perhaps Mr. Fuer was doing what he felt he had to do, but we also were reluctant to enter into a litigation with another city based upon an administrative action of theirs. We also felt that, we always get sued too. We're being sued by several other cities on various things, such as the airport. We're being sued on Playa Vista and so forth. So there was a reluctance on our part into litigation on that part. We also felt that the addition of these particular items was a benefit to the city of Los Angeles that wasn't there before. And these were things that were achieved in negotiation, and provided that those were stipulated and into a, basically a consent agreement, stipulated agreement, they would have force in law. And based upon that, that was the recommendation of both committees. And Mr. Svenic, you don't wish, do you want to concur with what I said? Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Fuer.
Thanks very much. I actually like, before my time starts, to ask Dan Koenig, Commander Koenig from PD, and Chief Pamatry to join us at the table, and Alan Rifkin as well, from DOT. All right. There were colleagues, I want to provide some context. I'd like to get a little quiet here, Nate, for just a second, please. I'd like to provide some context for another proposal that I want to put on the table that represents an attempt to try to meet everyone's needs here, but I need to give you a sense of some background, so bear with me as I do that for just a minute. There were a couple key concerns that were expressed, and Hal mentioned them just now, in the closed session yesterday. One of those concerns was, we really shouldn't sue other cities, and it's a view with which I basically agree, that we should be very reluctant to sue other cities. In this case, we, I've distributed, actually, to all of you, a one-page, single-spaced chronology delineating the multiple efforts that we made, myself, my staff, DOT, other city departments pursuant to council directive in some cases, to try to reach a compromise approach with West Hollywood. In each of those meetings that you see, the many of them, the theme was the same. We could do much better collaborating than getting into a contentious situation. There was a lot of discussion about how the Beverly Center and other developments of the city ignored the needs of West Hollywood, and my view publicly and privately continued to be, should we allow the sins of the past to be perpetuated now, or could we look at this as an opportunity to collaborate? Unfortunately, that approach was rejected, but the attempts are delineated in that document that you have. Second, people were concerned about the precedent of this, and I want to remind the council that our colleague in Ms. Galanter's district, there was real question about whether a Costco that was contemplated in Culver City to be built would have traffic impacts that couldn't be mitigated, and Culver City was ignoring the city of Los Angeles. And many of you were here when Los Angeles sued and got mitigations that were otherwise not available because we got a place at the table. So we've done this rarely, but occasionally in a very similar setting. I'll talk about timing, because this is integral here. The package of proposed mitigations that are on the table, that package was submitted on Monday. DOT got a preliminary fax on Friday, just a few days. Why the time pressure? What's going on here? Well, West Hollywood approved this project while we were on vacation. The last day for us to make a decision about litigation is today. That's why I brought this matter to us last week. Our city attorney advised that it wasn't timely to bring it to us until last week, and our colleagues wanted it in committee, so that's the pace that we are on. Yesterday, in open and in closed session, and you'll hear from them directly if you want, but Alan for DOT indicated that they have not had a chance to thoroughly scrutinize these proposals, and in fact, up until the receipt of those proposals, and I think still, DOT did not advocate mitigations at all because they couldn't think of anything that would mitigate the project's problems. Instead, DOT's recommendations in writing, which you've seen have to do with scaling back the project because there's nothing in the bag of tricks that could mitigate the project. Our police and fire chiefs, Chief Pamatry and Commander Koenig representing Chief Parks, submitted letters based on DOT's analysis and recommendations saying, "We oppose this project." What an extraordinary thing, because we can't protect our residents if you allow this to happen without meaningful changes to it. Yesterday, in closed session, I asked DOT, fire, and police if they were retracting those letters based on the proposed mitigations on the table, and each of them responded no. They responded no because, based on everything they know, they are not sufficient, but they haven't had a chance to fully address those issues. This has never been about opposing the project. A large project is entitled by the generous entitlements of West Hollywood's specific plan at this site. The high-paying union jobs at stake by the members of the unions who are here today, those aren't an issue because DOT presented analysis to us showing that relatively minor decreases in components of this project, 5%, take care of almost all the whole problem here for us. Thousands of trips go away if they take away the most trip-generating aspects of this. It's not about whether those jobs should be had or not. They should be. A project could be built here. It's about public safety, and that's why Chief Pamatry, Chief Parks, both said, "Without scaling back this project, we can't protect our residents." My proposal is this, and I would ask for a second for this proposal, if only for the sake of discussion. People can choose to vote against it or for it later on, but to get it on the table, it's this. I recommend that we preserve our rights while at the same time allowing the analysis that DOT, police, and fire have said repeatedly yesterday they have not had the chance to do because the proposals were submitted so recently, day before yesterday. The recommendation is that we file the suit today, but don't serve it. So West Hollywood has no obligations to respond. We give, I think, two weeks or 10 days. I have to check with the city attorney. Is allowed under CEQA before clocks start to tick, so whatever that timeframe is, 10 days or two weeks, we give fire, DOT, and police a chance to actually evaluate these mitigations, which yesterday they all said they hadn't been able to do. We shouldn't be willing to take the representations of the developer's paid traffic consultant over the recommendations, over the recommendations of our fire chief, our police chief, and our Department of Transportation, to whom in other settings we always say we should defer. Why defer to the biased views of the developer and discount the views of the people we hire to be our experts on public safety and traffic? So I move that we initiate the lawsuit, put it on hold by not serving it, have the report come back in either 10 days or two weeks. At that point, if DOT, fire, and police say, you know, these mitigations are really fine, then we unilaterally dismiss the action. It's completely in our power to do that, and I would move that as part of the action. So it's on the table, we would dismiss if our experts say these mitigations are adequate. But if they are not adequate, why on earth? We would eliminate these important points of access and not pay attention to the extraordinary letters we got from fire and police is beyond...
Mr. Fuer, I gave you six minutes.
I know you did, and thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Mrs. Walters.
Mr. President, I didn't hear a second on that motion.
Is there a second for purposes of consideration?
I would second it if you would condition it upon not serving it, having to take another vote of this council before it could be served.
Oh, yes, absolutely. That's intentional. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to oppose the prior actions that Mr. Fuer suggested of suing West Hollywood, and also the current actions that you're proposing in this motion that you have just made. When you talk about not being bound by the sins of the past, what about the sins of the present? We are very busy at Third and Fairfax with building a monstrous project on Farmers Market land, and also Park La Brea across the street has cleared out their tennis courts and green space and everything else to build some monstrous high-rise apartments along there. So the density is going to be increased right there at Third and Fairfax. Third Street is going to be immovable. You'll only be able to walk through there, let alone try and drive through there. Those are impacts, those projects will impact West Hollywood because West Hollywood is not very far away from the intersection of Third and Fairfax, just right up the street. And I think, councilmembers, that we really stand on a slippery slope when we start suing or threatening to sue other cities. L.A., we cannot, for all the overdevelopment that we have done in places around this city, we certainly cannot hold ourselves out as the champions of low-scale development and not impacting other people's neighborhoods. We have built projects all over this city without any thought to adjoining cities, and this is not the time for the 600-pound gorilla to, that's us, to flex our muscles on a small city like West Hollywood. So I would urge all of you to please vote no on any effort to sue West Hollywood. To sue them and not serve them, to sue them and serve them, both need to be voted down. And it seems to me, it takes a high degree of arrogance for us as L.A. to come along and tell another city that you can't build this, not with our track record.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is not the way to do planning. There were some significant issues, and I understood when Mr. Fuer brought this in, actually his point of discussion in December, that we had some problems, and I think his litany on his table of how we tried to get West Hollywood's attention, and we're not successful, is also not appropriate. We hear West Hollywood today saying, "Don't sue us. We have our own jurisdiction. We are doing things, we think we're doing them right in our city, and we think we've paid attention to you," but I think the record shows that attention was not being paid. Now, how we tried to get their attention, where we tried to get their attention, how we looked together collaboratively is not clear to me, but I think that the discussion and the precipitation in December by the possibility that the city would sue, could sue, brought West Hollywood to the table belatedly, and only then did things start to be put on the table. And I think what Mr. Fuer has said and did say yesterday, that there may be valid reasons to sue, and those valid reasons to sue are not to stop the project, but to get West Hollywood to the table. Over the last 30 days, as I've looked at this and discussed it with many people, including our citizens, our city peoples, people in the city of West Hollywood, I believe West Hollywood is now at the table, and what we've had offered is not necessarily a last-minute, last-ditch attempt to stop a lawsuit, but something that's substantive. Mr. Fuer talked about the serious concerns, and in fact, we got the letters from both our chief of police and our fire department, talking about their concerns about being able to adequately address public safety, and that paramount is the most significant issue. But there, both of their letters said, "We, as fire chief and police chief, would oppose this project unless the project is modified to preclude the adverse impact." I think what we have today in this coming to the table with our city Department of Transportation, with West Hollywood's traffic consultants, is a way to modify that project to address those public safety concerns. What we have first and foremost, and one of the most important things from public safety perspective, is the emergency vehicle response override. That is, all the fire equipment in the perimeter in our city going through West L.A., going through the West Hollywood area on Sunset and other streets, will have the ability to override the signals with our equipment. That's the most important public safety benefit. That was not in the project before. It was for West Hollywood, but not for the city of L.A., and we have a mutual pact. We also have in this area, as shown, we put in and have put a lot of faith in our city in something called the ATCS, Automated Traffic Control System, the latest version of ADSAQ, computer-sensitive traffic monitors that deal intersection by intersection across an entire grid of sensitivity to traffic and making traffic intersections clear. We imposed it in Trizakhan, we've imposed it in Farmers Market, we've imposed it in other West L.A. areas. West Hollywood put a similar system in West Hollywood. That's the yellow. We had the green in Trizakhan. The blue area in between, along Sunset, along Hollywood, along some of the other streets, was not included. It now is. These are tangible, real issues. Those normally deal with AM and PM peak issues. West Hollywood and Sunset has one other problem. It doesn't only have an AM and a PM peak, it has nighttime peak. It's got nightclubs, it's got nightlife, it's got cruising. There is stuff that is going on in the city of West Hollywood, and again, a stipulated agreement here says we in L.A. need to work better to coordinate all of that, have no nightclubs in this project, but particularly work on anti-cruising, which we are trying to do in Hollywood, but now we need to coordinate with West Hollywood. So I think this is the beginning of a collaboration and the way we should do planning. The city of L.A. should be participating in West Hollywood, and West Hollywood should be participating in West L.A., in the whole Los Angeles area. We should not do planning by boundaries, and that's what this has precipitated on the brink, and I think that the stipulated agreement starts to change that course.
Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. I just, since Mr. Fuer mentioned the Culver City lawsuit, I just wanted to review for most of you who weren't here at the time, what actually happened in that situation, which I think is, there are some similarities to this situation, but there are also some significant differences. First of all, at the bottom line, we lost the lawsuit. We got, we really lost the lawsuit. I guess it's not a polite way to express it that I was thinking, but we did not, we did not get anything out of the lawsuit, other than a delay. Most of what, there is a development onsite now. The Costco project is there, it's up. There is a traffic mitigation program being developed with the neighbors who are residents of Los Angeles, even though the project is in Culver City. The principal difference is that, really what changed the project is at the time we sued on this very small portion of Culver City, totally surrounded by Los Angeles except for about a one-block-wide corridor sticking off to the east. Originally, they had proposed a shopping center with two anchor stores, 100 small stores, I've forgotten how many movie theaters, but certainly multiple movie theaters, and something that was well beyond, totally out of character with the surrounding neighborhood, and well beyond what anybody really felt could be handled there, but it was going, it was indeed going to be good for Culver City, and they were very clear and explicit about why they felt that, and they were right. They were going to get a lot of tax money out of it. There was a community group that filed a lawsuit over the objections of the city attorney. I persuaded the city council at the time that we should also file a lawsuit, and as I mentioned, we lost. The economy fell apart shortly after those lawsuits were filed, and the real reason that the project changed, in my belief, is that because the economy had fallen apart and the developer went away and the landowner couldn't decide what to do with the land, we did in fact have time for additional discussions. Had we, had the economy not fallen apart and we had simply lost the lawsuit, I can tell you that the level of enmity between Culver City and the city of Los Angeles personified by me was pretty high at the time, and it has taken us a number of years to achieve a relative détente, and we're now all on speaking terms. So I think that it's important, as we're contemplating going into combat here, that we think about what we would hope to get from the combat. Personally, I think Mr. Fuer has already won more in this situation than we got in the Culver City-Cosco situation, even with the scaling down of the development to Costco. And this is one of those situations where it reminds me of, I've forgotten if it was Senator Akin or somebody else said about the Vietnam War, he said, "What we should do is declare victory and move on." I think this is a victory. I think this is exactly the kind of victory that one would hope to get out of a lawsuit, and it saves the expense and time... and it saves the expense and time and decline in intergovernmental relations that unfortunately come with the lawsuit.
Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, members of the council, you know, this project has been around for a while, and I tried to reserve judgment on what to do until I heard from staff and I heard from Mr. Fuhr's arguments as to exactly how we got here. And I also agreed with the panel yesterday that the lawsuit was not our solution. If anything, I thought this was an example of how not to do things. Quite frankly, I think we have a mess on Sunset Boulevard, and that's part of the reality of that corridor. And when I say we have a mess, we have a lot of people who go there for purposes of its retail and its entertainment, but a lot of people who go through there to go home, to go, to come to work, and our reality is, we know it's a major corridor of the city of Los Angeles. Now, the city of Los Angeles surrounds that whole corridor. West Hollywood is unique in that it was an unincorporated area, and it's surrounded by the city of L.A. And being around it means that our constituents also go through there on an ongoing basis. And West Hollywood has chosen not to put barriers to prohibit us from doing that. Now, we have continued to make decisions that say, "We're going to build the Trizakon, we're going to build the Getty Museum, we're going to do the kinds of things that we believe are good for the city of Los Angeles." And we know that when we have these major projects, there's tremendous debate. My question was, why was it that the departments were not ready to do mitigation when this project's been around so long? And part of it was, Mr. Fuhr was leading the charge of these negotiations. But I was really disappointed when I heard that the Department of Transportation had not analyzed mitigation measures, like they would a project in our own boundaries. I was disappointed when I heard the fire department, the police department, tell me the same thing, that they did not do an analysis until they had this recent information from Department of Transportation. What I did hear from all three departments is that we have these cooperative agreements with West Hollywood, because we go through those communities to service our constituents on an ongoing basis, and it's something we've had going since the inception of this, the city. And so, to me, we are just as at fault as we claim the project to be. But I didn't believe that a lawsuit is the solution. I didn't believe that us taking a position of forcing them to deal with us is the solution. And that's why I opposed the lawsuit, and I agreed to the stipulated agreements. I think this is a classic example of how we don't want to do things. We have to act as if it is our area, and how would we treat it? And if it was our project, I'm not sure we'd be opposing it with a lawsuit. And so, to me, I know that I've voted on other projects that increase the reality of that mess in that quarter. And I don't believe it is the problem of West Hollywood, well, I think it is a problem, their reality is, they're surrounded by the city of Los Angeles. And as I said yesterday in committee, it's not the city of Los Angeles that's surrounded by West Hollywood. And it made no sense for us to be talking about suing them, because I think they have many more opportunities to do that to us than we have to do it to them.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Wax?
I don't think this is really a simple issue. I probably know this area better than anyone, because I lived for five years above the strip between Kings and Queens Road in the '60s. And back then, long before many of the projects that are there now, I remember how hard it was to travail the strip at certain times of the year. The first thing I learned up there was how to get from Sunset Plaza to Laurel Canyon without going on Sunset Boulevard, because the traffic at times was impassable. This was in the '60s. Secondly, I don't agree with Mr. Fuhr that taking 35,000 square feet off is going to make the people above the strip one bit happier. That said, there is a problem there, and this project isn't going to make it better. It will only make it worse, the degree is how much worse. So, I think that Mr. Fuhr did right in trying to find ways to mitigate, and I don't think we would have had the mitigation features we have today, as Ms. Sikowsky mentioned, were it not for the actions he took. No one else was going to do it. And I thought, I seconded his motion, because I thought it gave us yet some more time to do that, without in essence, serving the lawsuit. And that's why I had conditioned it, when he mentioned it, that we couldn't serve it until it actually came back here for another vote, so that we would be able to continue what you've done in the last two weeks for a little while farther, involving our police, fire, and transportation, to see if yet we could have some more mitigation factors. And then a lawsuit may not even be on the table. That, to me, is a sound way to try to do something about it before it's too late. And I support your position, Mr. Fuhr, because I'd like to be able to come to a resolve without having to go to a lawsuit. And I think you've made progress towards that respect. I think the developers are also to be given credit for sitting down and negotiating, albeit at a late time, in coming up with what they had. And I think if you've started that process, there's no reason why you can't go a little further and come back with a satisfactory solution that would avoid it. So, I think your approach is a sound one, and I think that we should give it a try.
Mr. Savarnich?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. As co-chair of the committee that met yesterday that voted four to zero to instruct the city attorney to go ahead and begin negotiations or conclude negotiations with the city of West Hollywood in regards to a stipulated agreement, I believe that was conducted yesterday, wasn't it, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And was the document that was provided to you by West Hollywood after we instructed you as a committee prior to coming to council, did you enter into the agreements and a document was brought before us?
Well, that's what we have here today.
Okay. And did, and the city attorney's office, along with the Department of Transportation and the public safety departments reviewed it, or only the city attorney's office?
No, it has also been reviewed by the Department of Transportation. I'm getting a negative response from the fire department and the police department.
Okay. So, the question that I do have is, the agreement that you have before you, other than what we heard in committee, which was to scale back the project, is the agreement that we have before you concerns all of the mitigations that the city of Los Angeles could ask for?
I'll leave that to Mr. Rifkin to answer.
The correct answer is, we could ask for a lot more, but this agreement enforces the things that were before the committee yesterday.
Okay. So, the only instruction that the committee had yesterday was to go ahead and negotiate with West Hollywood in regards to the stipulated agreement with the mitigations that were in the document.
Yes.
Which means if we are to entertain Mr. Fuhr's amending motion, which was to file a lawsuit but not serve it, that that may take that, those stipulated agreement, that stipulated agreement off the table.
There has been some, some discussion that these, that this offer is off the table if we file suit.
Correct. The other issue is, is that I think what was not mentioned, is that the committee said that if the offer was refused, then our, then our option was to file suit. So, there are two ways to, in order for us to move forward with a lawsuit. Number one, do something which would take the stipulated agreement off the table, which would be embrace Mr. Fuhr's motion to go ahead and file a lawsuit and not serve it, or two, add other conditions that were not negotiated or discussed yesterday after the committee made instruction, which would be new to the process. And so, colleagues, I think very clearly that your committee voted four to zero, and I listened very intently to what Ms. Walters and Ms. Sikowsky and, and Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Burnson had to say, but what we instructed the city attorney's office to do with the city of West Hollywood, they did. Anything else that we discuss here today is something above and beyond what we were discussing in good faith with West Hollywood yesterday, which I believe would put the stipulated agreement in jeopardy, which would force our hand into doing a lawsuit.
Mr. Holden?
You too, Brutus?
I too.
That's what's happening. The fact that there are those who are with you, and as they say, and then they turn around, and they're those who are with you, but then they're again you. And you'll find that kind of flip-flopping, but that's okay. I just want to say that Mr. Fuhr has done an excellent job in bringing this matter to the table, and as he asked me to keep quiet when he was speaking, I'm going to ask him to do the same thing. The fact of the matter is that I believe that the city of Los Angeles has the right to bring a lawsuit. The law has changed since Ms. Galanter filed her lawsuit. There's a legislation that passed, a legislature that says that when a community construct or about to construct a project which have a serious negative impact on the journey of community, it must be mitigated. SCAG has already been involved in mitigating these kinds of disputes, and that's why we have the association of governments. So, SCAG, you just can't let these developments get out of control. But then, after saying that, who's there later to talk? We do it all the time. I mean, I know Ms., just Ms. Galanter brought a lawsuit against Culver City, and then we built up all that area around there during the...
And half the density.
I know, I know, but it looks awful when I go by there. I go by there once a month, and I got to tell you, every time I go by there...
On the way to the marina.
Yeah. It keeps growing and growing and growing, and now you got a 20-story building there on one side, oh my God.
It's a marina.
Oh my God, it's terrible. And the traffic impact, you know what? We contribute nothing to the, to the mitigating the traffic problem over there. I won't even get into that.
That's just a law.
I know, I know, we know. I just see it bumper to bumper. But in any case, I want you to know that if we have this stipulated agreement, and they don't follow it through because we didn't, we failed to file a lawsuit, could we get some kind of suspension or from the rules or have an agreement on the part of both cities and the contractor, that we could still file our lawsuit if they fail to comply within the periodic time, a period of time? Could the court, could we do that from the court? Should we go to Court Nine, ask for that, given that they failed to comply?
If I understand your question correctly, if we enter into this settlement and the terms of the settlement are violated by the developer not coming through with the money that is promised, we can go to court for their failure to live up to their agreement.
All right. So, I think that's the answer. Mr. Fuhr, you're getting everything you want, and you're entitled, you worked hard for your community, surrounding area, and at the negotiating table when nobody was there with you, but we're with you today, and I think that really answers your concern, and I support that effort.
Mr. Fuhr?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, a number of us at the table, a number of colleagues, have essentially said, "Accept victory and go home." And I appreciate that, and there's no question that but for the efforts, especially the most recent, most aggressive ones, these mitigation proposals wouldn't be on the table. And I understand that. The reason for my substitute motion being proposed is, our experts from DOT, fire, and police have not said that those mitigations are in fact victory. My proposal is, if they reach that conclusion, then we go away. It's only if they don't that we pursue, as Mr. Wax indicated, the stand-and-fight approach, and maybe not even then. The mitigations on the table could only help, there's no question. The question is whether they are adequate, and I would like us to defer to our experts who've had two and a half days, colleagues, and that's it, to review these proposals to actually verify what the developer is representing is true. With regard to the, I have an amending motion I want to offer as well. I have a substitute, which was procedurally voted on first, and also an amending motion. There are two aspects of the agreement that I think we ought to look at. One is, Keith, I understand that there may or may not be enough money on the table to actually do the specific things that this agreement would call for. And if the agreement is to be entered into, I'd like to move that the developer, West Hollywood, wherever the parties are to this, guarantee that they will pay the full costs of the specifically listed mitigation measures, so that we aren't left at the end of the day with a shortfall that the general fund would have to make up, or worse, that there would be mitigations offered, agreed to, but not performed. So, that's one amending motion, that we actually assure that the money is guaranteed, irrespective of what it is, given the content of what's on the table. And the other is this, you've heard representatives from our community, the Los Angeles residents, state their concern that Al Toloma, which is one of three streets traveling north-south in this area, has been cul-de-sacced, will be, under the proposal, and the reason was pretty clear, that in West Hollywood, there are a number of people opposed to the project if that traffic were to affect them, and so, West Hollywood cul-de-sacced Al Toloma under the proposal to preclude them from being adversely affected and essentially privatized the street. Many of colleagues here have spoken very vigorously against privatizing streets, that's what essentially that cul-de-sacking would amount to, and I would move also that we require the agreement include the elimination of that privatizing, the elimination of the cul-de-sac. And let me say one more thing, and this goes to Mr. Holden's question to Mr. Pritzker. Colleagues, let's be clear. If West Hollywood, if today passes and we don't do what I'm asking, which is merely to preserve our rights for the future, and that's all, by not, by not serving, that's all we've done is freeze our rights, if we don't do that, and the day passes, the stipulated agreement moves forward, and West Hollywood balks for some reason or another at any element of that, our remedy, colleagues, is not to do the mitigations, because a court is not going to order specific performance of those mitigations, right, Keith? The remedy is money, correct?
Yes.
And those specific mitigations require joint effort, that if one party doesn't want to pursue, money is never going to rectify.
All right, Mr.?
Thank you. So, I have that motion, I hope I are seconds to each of those two motions, at least to the purpose of discussion. Somebody second those motions?
Mr. Fuhr?
Joel, Mr. Wax has done so.
Mr. Burnson?
Yes, members of the council. First of all, I'd like to move the joint committee report. And I want to ask Mr. Pritzker, have you reviewed, do we have the stipulated agreement signed? Is it adequate signed, and the requirements that were imposed in committee, have those been incorporated in that agreement?
Yes, they have. However, I would add a caveat, adequate is certainly in the eye of the beholder and Mr. Fuhr.
I did not ask you that question, Mr. Pritzker. What I asked you is, what the committee asked to be done, was it done and it's been signed?
Yes.
Okay. Now...
Well, it hasn't been signed by the city of Los Angeles yet.
Okay, but it's been agreed to and signed by both West Hollywood and the developers, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that's number one. So, that part has been completed. One of the questions, and one of the key things in my mind, when we entered, when we started this discussion, I asked Mr. Rifkin and I asked the transportation department if they had asked for any other things that were not given, and the answer was no, if you recall, members of the committee. So, basically, in the negotiations, essentially, everything that was asked for by the city of Los Angeles DOT were granted. And at this date, now, we have a situation where we're asking, and what, really what the crux of this is, is not, the crux of this is not the traffic mitigations, it's what Mr. Fuhr is seeking is the reduction of the density, the reduction of the commercial. And that's what this is really all about. So, this is essentially something that the city of West Hollywood has the purview on as far as their community plan. In accordance with them and their decision, it meets the requirements of their community plan. I believe that if we were to proceed with a lawsuit, that we possibly might not win, number one, and if we did not win, we would not get any of these improvements, which were partially negotiated by Mr. Fuhr and Mr. Ferraro, for that matter, entered into these agreements. So, we take the chance of losing the important mitigations that I think are vital in this particular action, that we get these things which have been agreed upon. I think Mr. Fuhr has, has done a very, very good job of responding to his community. I think that he has done his best, and Mr. Ferraro also have done their best to try to gain the things the city of Los Angeles needs in order for this project to go forward without our litigation. And frankly, I am very hesitant, I agree with Ms. Walters on this, I'm very hesitant at any time to sue another agency, particularly with our record, because we've also caused a lot of the problems that exist on Los Anega and on Sunset. Let's be honest about it, okay? So, what I'm asking for, members of the council, I would move the committee report, I would ask for a no vote on the postponement, because this is just a way of trying to get the camel's nose under the tent. And I'm sorry, Mr. Fuhr, I did not interrupt you. I think that this is just another attempt to stall, to get this thing delayed and to get the... to get the camel's nose under there, once we've agreed to file a lawsuit, because that's what they're asking you to do, he's asking you to do. As far as the Alta Vista Street cul-de-sack, I've reviewed the plan this morning after looking at it, and I agree that we should not do this, because it would not be in the interest of the people who live adjacent to the particular development. So I'm asking for a no vote on both the substitute motion and the amendment, and an I vote on the committee report.
Mrs. Chick.
Yes, I would like to hear something from our three experts sitting at the table, in terms of their views in the short period of time you've had to look at the current proposal. And then specifically to Mr. Rifkin, when you answered in committee, was there anything on the list that you hadn't asked for? And you said, "No, there's nothing on the list I haven't asked for." Did you ask for anything?
The mission that Department of Transportation was looking for was what items could make a significant impact, given the high level of impact of this project, which we were arguing was concentrating a lot of the development of the specific plan at one block. And that was one of the reasons why the Department of Transportation had expressed an opinion that, short of reducing the size of the project, there wasn't anything that would significantly impact the conclusions of the impacts of the project. We could have asked...
And therein was part of the argument on which the lawsuit was based, in terms of the premise that West Hollywood violated its own MEIR.
Right. So the things that were proposed by West Hollywood and the developer are things that benefit the City of Los Angeles, but we have no analysis or conclusion that those things would significantly reduce the level of impact to the City of Los Angeles, because we don't have any analysis by West Hollywood specifically about Los Angeles intersections. I mean, it's just really a matter of how much analysis they do and what we had to review. So, again echoing what Mr. Fuhrer said, I agree that those are good things that were proposed, but we have no way of saying they're adequate or significant.
Before I end, and hopefully we hear from our Fire Chief and our Deputy Chief, in terms of the lawsuit, I thought that's on the grounds of violating the MEIR, and here we are, doing very good work, trying to get further mitigations for impacts. How did the two go together? If we did the lawsuit and won it, we would not be getting these mitigations, right?
That's correct.
We'd be getting a scaling back of the project?
Well, you may or may not. What you would get is you'd get a requirement for a new EIR. And then the question is, what is that new EIR going to show, and can they, how can they mitigate the impacts as required by CEQA for that newly evaluated project?
Okay, thank you. But I would like to hear from Police and Fire.
Chief, you want to comment before we call on Mr. Savornich?
This project, the Dobla Matri Fire Chief, this project was brought to us by both proponents of it and the opponents of it. When we looked at it, there were no traffic studies by our Department of Transportation about the impact of that project. That is a difficult area for us, it's always been a difficult area for response, but we don't have the traffic engineers to determine the impact. We said, "Once that was done by DOT, we could take a position." That report was done, it showed an adverse impact, and that's why we oppose the project without mitigating factors.
Commander Dan Koenig from the Police Department, and we're similarly situated. We surround West Hollywood with Hollywood Division. The traffic study, DOT study, showed approximately a 30% increase in traffic. If that's true, or even if most of that's true, that's a substantial problem for us. A number of mitigation issues were put on the table two days ago. We don't know how much, if any, that reduces or mitigates that problem. We don't know.
Hold on a second. Mr. Savornich? Mr. Savornich moves a previous question.
Wait, 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 no. I got to make... I got to... This is important, members, this is information. The developer has agreed, there's a line in here that Mr. Fuhrer's office was concerned about, and that's 3B on Attachment A, contribution to ATCS and Sunset Boulevard corridor in Los Angeles, $315,000. There was a question raised by Mr. Fuhrer's office as to whether that was going to be adequate to do the job. The developer has agreed to cover any overrun costs on that. So I would move that as an amendment. We have his word on that, and based upon that, I'm prepared to proceed. Now you can ask for...
Mr. Burnson says I can move the previous question. Prepare the roll on the previous question. Tabulate the vote.
14 nyes.
Thank you for voting for it, Nate. Okay. What do we have first?
You have three amending motions in front of you. 12A is a substitute motion, Fuhrer, Wax, to preserve rights, file lawsuit today but not serve it, conditioned upon council vote before serving.
To substitute.
And have substitute for the committee report.
Ask for a no vote.
All right. Prepare the roll on, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Four nyes, 10 nyes.
That did not pass. Now we have before us...
You have the report before you, and two amending motions to the stipulation agreement. Stipulation agreement, 12C is to amend the agreement, require agreement, eliminate the cul-de-sack at Alta Loma.
Ask for a no vote.
I vote.
Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Four nyes, 10 nyes.
That failed. Next item?
12B, that's Fuhrer, Wax's motion, to the agreement to require West Hollywood and developer to pay full cost mitigation measures, assure that, give a guarantee that the money is available for the mitigation effort.
All right. Prepare the roll on that.
Point of order. Would that include more than 3B?
Whatever recommendations are that we can be adopted, we agree to pay for.
Well, let me ask the developer, if it goes beyond that, will you agree to that?
Yes.
If it also covers...
Anything else needed in mitigation, is it there?
If it also covers 3A, which is emergency vehicle traffic signal promotion, preemption?
Yes, sir.
Okay, he agrees.
Would you give your name, please?
Mark Siffin.
You're the developer.
Yes, I am.
And you agreed to...
I asked for an I vote.
Point of order, point of order.
Where's the point, Mr. Holden?
The point is, he's agreeing to something that we don't know what he's agreeing to, they just anything.
Yeah, we know, Nate.
Who's going to define that?
Nate, Nate, we know.
Adults, what does that mean? We see them all around here.
Prepare the roll.
Ask for a, we can ask for an I vote on this.
Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 nyes, 1 no.
That is approved. Now we have the committee report as amended?
Yes, ask for an I vote.
Prepare the roll on the committee report as amended. Tabulate the vote.
12 nyes, 2 nyes.
That is approved.
Mr. President, I just want to give credit to Mr. Fuhrer and to the people in the community. I know this was a tough decision for everybody, but we did what we thought was appropriate, and I think Mr. Fuhrer really went to bat for you, and I want to give him full credit for that. Also, Mr. Ferraro, who used his wisdom and judgment as our leader and helped in this. Thank you.
All right, we still have quite a few items on the agenda here, so can I ask those of you who were here on the last item to exit quietly, and, or if not quietly, at least quickly? And let's move to the next item.
Item number 17, called special by Councilmember Chick.
All right. Councilmember Chick, is she here? Where is she? There you are, okay. All right, push the button, here we go.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I simply want to call this motion to my colleague's attention, and an interesting point in time to do so, since we've just had a very thoughtful debate and discussion on doing the right thing. This motion addresses what clearly has been exposed to us as some flaws in our contracting process. We have recent examples, both the Van Nuys Airport Golf Course, the Greek Theater contract, where departments are not necessarily doing the legwork and the advance work that is needed to come up with the very best deal when the city goes out to bid on a variety of contracts. This motion looks to put into place some of the improvements that we need to make to make sure that taxpayer dollars, which are significantly spent on a regular basis in contracting out services or construction projects, are well-spent. So colleagues, I ask for your unanimous support. It's just one more step coming through the Governmental Efficiency Committee to make sure that our contracting process is legal, protects dollars, and is in the best interests of the city. Thank you.
Ms. Goldberg. I would just like to add that, well, I think this is a good measure, but I would hope that one of the things that you look at, besides living wage and equal benefits ordinance in those long-term contracts, and obviously affirmative action-type numbers, is also the whether or not departments in extending them are, what they, an extension triggers living wage. There are two ways that a department can deal with that. One is to pass dollar-for-dollar on to the city, and the other is to negotiate that, even though there's living wage, that the contractor absorbed the cost. We have found that, that there, a lot of them are passing the dollar-to-dollar on. We never intended to pay for everybody's living wage. We thought the market should do that, and if that's happening, it would be useful to put those out to bid and not extend those contracts. So I would just urge that that be something that get looked at in this study.
All right, so are we incorporating that into the recommendation? All right. Anybody else? Open the roll, close, oops, sorry, Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with doing this. I just want to add, though, you know, a lot of times, we have people that are performing well. The pressure comes from other competitors and other lobbyists who are being paid by those competitors to do things like this, to review, and sometimes when, and I abstained from the vote on the Greek Theater, by the way. But the point is, that just because a contract may be up for expansion, doesn't mean that it's bad for the city, or doesn't mean that you're doing the wrong thing. What it means is, that when you, for the purposes of extension, you get something, and you get something immediately. And remember, the pressures that come are not necessarily from the people, they are from lobbyists, they are from other opponents who wish to unseat the incumbent who's ever in there, just as people would like to unseat you at times, okay? So bear that in mind.
Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. What I would like to do is a clarification of what was the council being asked to do in regards to amending this item, and I don't know whether or not the clerk got it all, or, did Ms. ...Jackie? Jackie? Before you take off, could you please restate what you asked to be in this, because I missed it, and I don't know if the clerk has all of it.
It was basically, let me see if I got it, and then, if I didn't, correct me. Basically, that in reviewing the contracts for possible extension, that all these city entities also review whether the costs of compliance with the living wage and worker retention and all those other ordinances were, in fact, being absorbed by the contractor, or were being passed along, so that we were paying. My, yes. My understanding is, is that sometimes when you don't want to go through the process, a department does not want to go through the process of putting something out to bid again. Rather than saying, you know, "You got to absorb the costs of living wage, and that means your profit margin may go down, but that's life in the urban areas," some departments have been paying dollar-for-dollar the living wage costs in the contract extensions. That was never our intent. We intended the marketplace to make those decisions. And so I have been working with some of the departments, where we found this practice prevalent, to ask them that, if that's what's going on, would you please put those contracts out for bid again, if the contractor says, "Well, I can't do it." And let's see if the marketplace means that we have to pay dollar-for-dollar for it. And the answer from some of those departments is, is that they've put them out to bid, and in fact, it hasn't cost us nearly what they thought it would. It's cost considerably less, because there was such a large margin of profit in those contracts to begin with. So I'm just saying, as long as we're doing a review of our long-term contracting, it would be useful to ask departments to tell us whether or not they've gone out to bid when a contractor said this to them, or whether they just simply said, "The city will absorb the costs," which was never our intent. Is that clear now? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm...
Excellent point.
Okay, now, are we ready to vote? Yes, open the roll, close the roll.
11 nyes.
Thank you. Next item.
Items number 23 and 24, called special by Councilmember Walters.
Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Madam President. Both items, 23 and 24, today are asking for positions to be exempted from civil service. And I oppose both of them. We're getting more and more of these. I raised this question before, about bypassing the civil service process for general manager positions, and then other positions. And here, we have a position of deputy city engineer that's supposed to be exempted. The city engineer was exempted, that was an outside, a recruitment from another city. And now we're talking about doing the same, exempting a deputy city engineer, as well as a principal architect. One of the functions of civil service in terms of a steady workforce is that people have an opportunity to take these various exams, to prepare themselves for higher jobs in our bureaucracy. And I think it does harm to their motivation, harm to their outlooks in terms of, their outlook in terms of career planning, when we are saying to them that there's nobody within the city that has the requisite skills to fill these positions. In addition to the deputy city engineer position and the principal architect, we want to exempt a position of assistant retirement plan manager. I don't think these are, any of these are positions that we cannot fill from within the city. And councilpeople, I would urge you to vote no on both these reports.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm just going to exercise the prerogative of the chair here to inform you that we now are down to 10 members, and these are 10 vote items, both of them. It's my understanding, and maybe somebody from staff can help me on this, but the, I don't think exempting means that they can't be filled from within. I think all it means is that once they're filled, once the person takes that position, that they are then not afforded some of the same protections as civil service. Is there anybody from staff who can come up here?
Madam Chair, while they're coming up...
Also, excuse me one second, Mrs. Walters, it turns out I also have a card here, from the gentleman who was here yesterday. So let's hear from the staff, then let's hear from the union, and then I will call on you again.
I'm George Springer from Personnel Department. As I understand the question, if the council approves the exemption of the position, can they then change their mind and use their...
No, no, no. Mrs. Walters has raised a concern, a perfectly valid concern, that this may be sending, that to exempt these positions, well, she can speak for herself, and I'm sure she's going to in a moment, but basically, that exempting the position sends a message to our civil service employees that we don't believe that we can find qualified people here in the city. And my question was whether exemption precludes in any way hiring somebody from within the city, or whether it simply means, once you get hired or selected for that position, you no longer have certain civil service protections.
The latter is correct. In other words, we can choose someone from inside the city government, and they do lose certain civil service protections.
Right, and I don't think this really addresses Mrs. Walters' question, but at least it clarifies, it does address my question. Anybody else? Mr. City Engineer?
I'm Vittaly Tryon, a city engineer, and I would like to address Councilmember Walters' concerns.
Councilwoman, I wholeheartedly and completely believe in the civil service system. The reason I came to ask for these particular exemptions is that on July 1st, under the charter, I am allowed to have two exempt deputies. One of my deputies retired. Another was a new position created in the budget. So what I wanted to do was to open this selection process up to the entire world, basically. I have told my staff that I think they're highly qualified, and that in fact, any of them who meet the minimum standards will be admitted into the examination process. What I want to do is broaden the field in which I can search. On the principal architect position, there are only two incumbents who are qualified for the position. The principal architect is, next to the director of planning, probably has the biggest impact on the way Los Angeles looks of any employee whatsoever. And for that position, for a world-class city like Los Angeles, I want to be able to make sure that the person we pick is the best person for that job and not just have to choose among two existing candidates. A secondary consideration is that when I looked at the staffing levels of the management structure of the Bureau of Engineering, out of the top 40 people, there are approximately two women. There are no blacks. We have some Hispanics, some Asians. When I look at my top six management structure, they're all males, two of whom are Hispanic. I want to be able to diversify my own management structure as an example to the rest of the Bureau of Engineering. And that's why I've asked for exemptions for these three positions. Concurrently, I have assured people that I have a dozen principal engineer positions, and that I have no intention whatsoever of asking for exemptions for them, that they will be filled through the civil service system. I have also assured people that there may be one more vacant deputy position coming up shortly, and if that person chooses to retire, I will fill that through the civil service system. So this is a very limited request for exemption for three senior-level management positions, and that's all I'm trying to do.
Okay. Did you want to add something, or?
Actually, the, the city engineer covered my issues fairly well.
Fine. Thank you. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We will now open the public hearing and hear from Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I'm Bob Aquino, the executive director with EAA. The nature of our presentation today, basically, it goes, goes to the fairness of deciding this without having input from our side on it. We were not directly invited to the Personnel Committee hearing, and in fact, some of our members only found out about the morning of the hearing. Information has been developed and is being developed that I believe affects the decision on this particular issue as it applies to the single architect's position. I know it's a small number of employees, and it's a, a small issue in the city, but it's extremely important to the individuals that it affects. What we're asking is an opportunity to at least present the facts that we've developed to the Personnel Committee before this council rules on the issue. So to recap, we want to have some input to the Personnel Committee before you guys rule on this.
All right, let me just ask, if this, this has not been to committee, you said? Is that all right?
No, actually, there was a, there was a Personnel Committee convened in December. It's just that we weren't notified of it.
All right, hold on. Thank you. All right. Public hearing is now closed. Now, is there a prob, do you have a problem if we ask that it go back to committee and let, give them a chance to have their say at committee?
No, that's fine.
All right, well, why don't, is that all right? Mrs. Walters, did you want to?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, it can go back. I have no problem with it going back to committee, but I do take exception with something that Mr. Troyan said about he wants to go outside, wants to open it to the world because he has no diversity on his upper staff. Mr. Troyan, you had an opportunity very recently to appoint an African-American woman who was in the department to your staff, and you chose not to do that. So I don't know what make, would make me believe that you're going to be any more sensitive to that by going outside. And I would like to see it go back to Personnel Committee.
All right. I think what we're going to do if, unless there's any objection, is ask that it go to the committee and give EAA and anybody else who didn't hear about it a chance to be heard, and we'll ask that it come back as, as quickly as possible. And you can live with that, right?
Yes.
You're going to have to, basically?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That'll be the order. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we have a bare quorum here, which we're going to lose in 20 minutes, and we have several closed-session items. So if I could ask all of you who are not involved in the closed-session items to leave. I know that we also still have public comment, but we've got to get some of these done today. Yes, while we're clearing the room, let's do the administrative details.
Councilmembers request to be excused from council. Councilmember Chick requests to be excused on Tuesday, January 25th, to leave at 11:30 and March 31st for city business.
So ordered.
Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused on Friday, January 14th, for city business. This requires a motion.
Well, I'll move it if no one else will. Let's see, Mrs. Chick can move it, Mr. Wax can second it.
And Councilmember Ferraro requests to be excused on January 12th to leave at 11:40 for city business.
Well, he's left, so I guess we'll have to give him permission. That's it?
Motion's for posting a referral.
Without objection, so ordered. Anything else?
Just public comment.
All right. Are we, are we closed here? Let's go. I see news media in the room.
Okay, we are back in open session. We have lost a quorum for the day. Any adjourning motions or any other business that we had before the council will be continued until tomorrow, being no further business before us because of a lack of a quorum. The council is adjourned.
Any motions? Please? The lights are up.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.